Gentlemen, it's 5:30. We will call the meeting of the recess meeting of the Board of Aldermen to order. We'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please, followed by an invocation. Alderman Vaughn is kind enough to give us, and then we'll have a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm a spring. Our God and our Father, our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Father God again, here's a few of handmade circles. Father God, that you allowed, allowed your Holy Spirit to direct to this place, and most of all, you allowed your speakers to elect us to be in this position. But we ask you now, Father God, that you would take the rings of our minds, most of all, Lord, you would take our heart, and put it on this agenda, Father God, whatever it is. You blessed us to make the best decision, or the decision that will glorify you, because you is our God and we your Father. You is our God and you will your servants, but most of all, God, because of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, died out on Calvary, God, that we all could have eternal life when this life is over, and abundant life while we on earth. You said love you one another the way you love us. The Lord, the only way we can love each other, we have to be fair and honest to one another. But we thank you so much for being that great God, a God that said you'll never leave us, not what you forsaken, a God that say you won't put no more than we can bear. But we ask you now, Father God, that you will fill this place with your Spirit. And Father God, at the end of the day, we would give all praise and glory and honor to you because of who you are and the way you are. And again, we thank you so much for being our God and we your servant, being our Father and we your children. But most of all, thank you for controlling our destiny, not leaving us in the hand of no man. We give all praise and honor and glory to you. Father, it's in Jesus' name that we do pray. Amen.
All right. Thank you all for being here on this wet evening. We appreciate your attendance. We have our first action will be to approve the official agenda with consented items. Do I have any changes to the consent agenda or to the agenda as it's stated? Alderman Vaughn?
Mayor, under item 11, Department Business, under B, Community Development, number two, Planning, I'd like to put item D on consent.
Item D, which is the consideration of preliminary plan and the final plan?
Yes.
Okay. Any objections to?
Wait.
I'm sorry. It's under Department Business, 11, item B, two, D. It's a final plat consideration and a, I'm sorry, preliminary plat and a final plat consideration.
And Mr. Havlin, in that, the zone is already R5, and they're just subdividing the lot, and it's still going to be both lots, R5. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Any objections? Any objections? All right. Seeing none, we'll place that item on the consent agenda. Any further items?
Yes, Mayor. Under Department Business, under Information Technologies, H, item number one, to consent.
Okay. Any objections to item number one going to consent under IT?
Would.
Under IT. That's the IP, the data service and GPS fleet tracking. Seeing none? Okay, that one will go to consent.
Mayor, I have one more.
One more?
Under Department Business, number L, you tit, the letter L, Utilities, item number two, to consent.
Okay. Lowest and best bid for the Pleasant Acres subdivision, which should be on item before you. I think there's one on the, at the table, which is at 980,188 from 4D Construction. Any concerns with that one? Seeing none, we'll place that one on consent. Any other changes to the agenda?
Mayor, I have a question.
Mr. Little?
Under Section A, Public Hearing B, did I hear that this has been?
That has been pulled. Yes, I'm sorry. Thank you. I scratched through it, but I didn't mention it, so.
Was that to have a public hearing, or would that be pulled completely?
Um, Mr. Latimer, would we need to have a public ser?
If it's been noticed, we just need to call for it.
Well, I'm sure it has been noticed. Okay, all right. Okay.
You could do that off the top for the agenda purposes if you wanted to, or what sort of that time we need to?
I will just go through it, so cut it out. Okay, all right. Anything else?
Mayor.
I'm sorry, Alderman Vaughn.
I'd like to remove under Board Business, item B.
Remove it from, okay, remove it from consent.
Consent agenda.
Okay.
And then under?
Item B under Board. Okay, go ahead.
Under D, Engineering, I'd like to remove item one.
D Engineer, item one, okay, all right. Okay, can remove, remove from consent, okay.
Under Parks, item two, I'd like to keep it on, but I have a question for Mr. Logan. Is he here?
Mr. Logan is up in Oxford at the conference.
Okay. Do we know the timeline of when that will be installed?
Um.
Just any indication typically?
I do not know. I think we have, I think we've received it, or were about to receive it. I thought he had said the end of this month or the beginning of next.
Okay, so install within the next month.
Within the next 30 to 60 days.
Just curiosity.
Yeah, 30 to 60 days.
Okay. And then I'd like to, under Mayor's Business?
Yes, sir.
Item C.
Okay.
Consideration of a special event request for the 2009 19 Pumpkin Palooza with in-kind services.
That should be 2018, I believe.
2018, excuse me?
I believe so. That's for this year.
Or it says that on the, yeah, I should say 2018?
Yes.
I'd like to move that up in the agenda.
Okay.
If we could move it up, under number five, Announcements and Comments, right after Mayor's comments and Board's comments.
Okay. Any objection to moving the Pumpkin Palooza special event up underneath Announcements and Comments? Okay, seeing none, we'll move that up closer to, to the front of the agenda. Okay. Any other changes to the agenda or the consent agenda? All right. Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve the agenda with the consent agenda as?
No.
Okay, wait a minute. Hold it, I'm sorry. I apologize. We have a, we have a request, and I actually thought that it was, it's under, we'll be under the Fire Department, which is to add, and it should be at your place there. I had emailed the Board about it, just letting you know it was coming. It's the approval of promotion process, and actually, technically, it's under Human Resources, but it is for the Fire Department, so you have it in front of you.
Mayor, I would move to put that on consent.
Okay. I have a motion to put that item on consent, or put that under Human Resources. Do I have any concerns with, from the Board about placing that item on consent? Okay. Seeing none, would that be, would change your motion to approve, do I have a motion? Did I get a motion to approve? Okay. I'm waiting on a motion to approve the agenda with the consented items as listed.
Move it.
I have a motion from Alderman Little and a second from Alderman Miller. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, with that in mind, I'm gonna see if I can make my way through reading the consent items, so if I leave something off, y'all, somebody poke me. Consideration of the minutes of the September 18th, 2018 recess meeting of the Mayor and Board of Aldermen of the City of Starkville.
No problem.
No, these are, these are the consent agenda. I'm just reading.
Are you reading?
Yeah, I'm sorry. This is, this is the things that were consented, and I'm just gonna be reading them from Ald, for Alderman Vaughn, well, for, for the viewing audience, so. Consideration of the minutes of the September 28th, 2018 work session of the Mayor and Board of Aldermen of the City of Starkville, Mississippi. On Pumpkin Palooza is coming up there, so I'll skip over that. Consideration of the approval under Mayor's Business of the OCDA 2% budget in accordance with the 2018 legislative authorization, Senate Bill 3012. Consideration of the approval of the engagement letter from Watkins Ward and Stafford for the fiscal year 2018 audit for the City of Starkville. Consideration, this is under Board Business.
That is off consent.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, yes, removed from consent. Thank you. All right. Under Planning, we have consideration of travel and training for Emmanuel Moore to attend an educational conference of the Building Officials Association of Mississippi, December 5th through the 7th, 2018, in Oxford, at a cost not to exceed $800. We added to the consent agenda item D, which is consideration of preliminary plat 18-15 and final plat 18-11, a request for preliminary plat and final plat approval for subdividing a .76 acre lot into two lots on Isaiah Lane in an R5 zone with a parcel number 102N-00-020.00. Next item is request acceptance of the September 2018 financial statement. Consideration of approval to advertise a request for proposals for janitorial services for City Hall. Consideration of a final fiscal year 2018 budget adjustments. Under Fire Department, we have request permission to purchase four sets of Lion V-Force PBI Max firefighting coat and pants from NAFCO in the amount of $9,954.64 off state contract list. HR, we've got request authorization to hire William Alfred as a temporary full-time help desk administrator in the Information Technology Department. Then we have the request approval for the promotion of James Sharp to the rank of Battalion Chief in the Starkville Fire Department. Request approval of the promotion of Jerome Clark to the rank of Captain in the Starkville Fire Department. Request approval of promotions of Philip Cumming and Matt Wilson to the rank of Lieutenant in the Starkville Fire Department. Request approval of the promotions of Edwin Suggs and Josh Cox to the rank of Sergeant in the Starkville Fire Department. And request authorization to retain candidates from the promotion process held on October the 11th and 12th, 2018, for consideration to fill any additional vacant positions due to retirements, terminations, or approved additions to the Fire Department within the period of one year. And under Parks, we have consideration of the approval of facility use agreement with the Starkville Academy for use of an, I forgot one, I'm sorry. Okay. Back up. In order, request approval of the data service and associated equipment purchase with Verizon Connect Network Fleet for GPS fleet tracking of city vehicles. Under Parks, consideration of the approval of facility use agreement with Starkville Academy for use of an athletic field for their varsity boys soccer program. Two is consideration of approval to purchase installation and surfacing of Moncrief Park Playground in the amount of $16,716.86 from Planet Recession, the lower of two quotes. Under Utilities, we have request authorization to accept the lowest and best quote for one pump repair for pump number four at the Influent Pumping Station for the wastewater treatment plant for the amount of $8,535 from Burford Electric Service, Inc. We have request authorization to accept the lowest and best bid for labor for the construction of Pleasant Acres subdivision water sewer replacement from 4D Construction with materials to be purchased under the approved source of supply contract. And number three, authorization to accept lowest and best bid for Roundhouse Road Gravity Sewer Expansion for the amount of $546,977.55 from PermaCorp. And that concludes the consent agenda. Alderman Vaughn?
Go back to my HR technology.
Yes, sir.
Does this mean all city work vehicles?
Yes, sir.
All cities, all departments?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Just the work vehicles? Does it mean the department head vehicles also?
It means all vehicles. No, it means all vehicles.
Okay.
Okay, and we will do announcement and comments, and then we'll do the Pumpkin Palooza, and I have several announcements. First, let me start with Alderman Miller, who is now Father. He welcomed Olivia Caroline.
Yes.
Is that correct? And I don't know pounds and ounces, but congratulations.
Yes, thank you so much. We're ecstatic.
I'm sure you are.
She's one week and a day old today.
Excellent. Anyway, congratulations.
Thank you.
I also want to name, we have, we have nine first responders in Florida, and I would like us to acknowledge them. I want to call their names out. In fact, we've got pictures up on the, up on the screen there. Under the Utilities Department, we have David Liel, David Hatfield, Brad Scarborough, Justin Hatcher, and Todd Giles, and that would be those gentlemen right there. In fact, I got an email this morning, which I forwarded on, from a gentleman who lives in the Tallahassee area and was very complimentary of our crew coming through. He thought they were just gonna come through and assess it and then leave. They came through, made the repairs, and he has electricity now, so he was, he was pretty excited, and I was impressed that he took the time to, to say thank you. But anyway, thank you to them. Mr. Kemp, be sure and tell them so, please. And then for our Fire Department, we have Blake Daniels, Justin Edwards, Nathan Herndon, and Matt Schober, who are in Tallahassee. Is that correct, Chief Steele?
Yes, ma'am. They're, they're on their way back.
So they're, they're on their way back?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Well, and I know the Utility Department will be on their way back tomorrow, I believe. So everybody's, has done, done their, served their, their area and, or served the Flor, state of Florida, and are on their way back, and we have great appreciation for all the work they did, and we appreciate their willingness to go there. So makes, makes us proud, makes us very proud, so please convey that to them. And then we have, the SHS Homecoming Parade is not tonight. I'm making the announcement it's supposed to be Thursday night, so the rain rained them out, so they will be having their homecoming parade on Thursday night. So we were unable to go tonight, but perhaps we can grace the streets and enjoy that on Thursday evening. I also have new employee introductions, which I will do now. We want to take this opportunity to introduce them to the public and to ourselves, so we'll have faces that go with names. The first is Vincent McKenzie. He's a Systems Engineer for Starkville Utilities Department, Water and Sewer Division. Vincent grew up in Sturgis, Mississippi. He's a graduate of Starkville Academy and earned his Bachelor of Science degree in Civil Engineering from Mississippi State University. Before joining the Starkville Utility Department, Vincent worked for a consulting firm as a design engineer. During his spare time, Vincent enjoys baseball, all types of motorsports, yard work, any and all MSU sports, and spending time with his family and his Labrador Phoebe. Welcome. Thank you so much. We appreciate you being here.
I'll give you the picture, sir.
Absolutely. My pleasure. Thank you. Thank you. Next, we have Nicholas Bean, who's a police officer. Nicholas is from McComb, Mississippi. He's a graduate of Parkline Academy. He attended Southwest Mississippi Community College. Nicholas worked for Lot Furniture before, before coming, becoming a Starkville Police Officer. Nicholas enjoys hunting, fishing, riding dirt bikes, going to the range, and spending time with his family. Welcome, Nicholas.
Thank you.
Next, we have Rahim D. Clemmons. Mr. Clemmons is from Columbus, Mississippi. He's a graduate of Columbus High School. He attended East Mississippi Community College. Prior to joining the City of Starkville, Rahim was a police officer for the City of Columbus. When his time permits, he enjoys playing the bass guitar, hunting, community service, and spending time with his family and daughter Harmony. Rahim attends Southside Missionary Baptist Church. Welcome. And next, we have Dalton Gregory Daniel. Mr. Daniel is from Hattiesburg, Mississippi. He graduated from South Jones High School and attended the University of Maryland and University College. Dalton previously worked as a police officer for the City of Louisville before joining the Starkville Police Department. During his spare time, he enjoys fishing, traveling, sporting events, concerts, and spending time with his family. Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here. And last but not least, Marquez Quinn. He's our Community Development Administrator in the, in the Community Development Department. Marquez is originally from West Point, Mississippi. He's a graduate of East Mississippi Community College, where he earned his Associate of Arts degree in secondary education. He received his Bachelor of Science degree in interdisciplinary studies from MUW and Master of Science degree in organizational leadership from Columbia Southern University. Before joining the City of Starkville, Marquez worked as a floating teller for Renaissance Bank. During his free time, he enjoys a variety of activities, including cooking, particularly baking, working with computers, and spending time with family. Marquez attends Northside Christian Church in West Point, Mississippi. Welcome.
Thank you.
All right. Nice to see new faces. And that is all that I have, so do we have any Board of Aldermen comments? Anyone on the Board like to make comments?
I just want to take time to publicly highlight the Pleasant Acres project and thank all of y'all on this board. It's something that this board has been proactive about, and that's gonna be the first of many, many items that's gonna come through on the water sewer replacement. Thank you, Mr. Kemp. Thank your department, and then the contractors and everything else. But as far as this board and the mayor, I want to thank y'all personally, individually. This is something that will look, you know, when the construction starts, we'll get a lot of calls. I know you will. But thank y'all.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, and next item we have that we've moved forward is the consideration of a special event request for the 2018 Pumpkin Palooza with in-kind services.
Mayor, move approval. Second.
I have a motion from Alderman Walker and a second from Alderman Miller. Discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
All right, by a vote of five to two, motion carries. All right, anything further? Let's see, citizens' comments. Okay, and I was called a task last time we had a board meeting, and I think they were absolutely correct. Citizens' comments is an opportunity for someone to come forward for three minutes. It is not a point where we have a conversation with the person. This is just the opportunity for someone to come forward and speak directly to us about any matter that they wish to speak about, but we don't normally engage with questions and back and forth, so I just want to be clear about that. So if we have anyone who wishes to come forward to give us, they have three minutes to give us your thoughts. Good evening, Mr. Turner.
Good evening to the Mayor, Board, and I have some, what's up? I'd like to, to the Mayor, to the Police Department, to the NACP president.
Thank you, sir.
The citizens have a few concerns, and that is time fall back next month, and we will have a less daylight, and it's gonna make it hard for the Police Department and the, our NACP and people that try to watch out for crimes. And one, one concern is we, that we see people that have blue lights in their vehicle, headlights, and we just want to know, is that legal or not? Also, credit safer thing for October 31st, to be on the safe side, with, with that being what it is. And we would like for the chief to kind of help us out on, a lot of people, they get upset with this open weapon law concealed weapon situation. Like for him to kind of help us on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. All right, do we have anyone else who wishes to come speak to the Board? Anyone else? All right, seeing none, we will close the citizen comment time period. We have no public appearances this evening. We have a public hearing. This is the second public hearing, consideration of amending Section 30-32 of the City's Transient Vendor Ordinance Number 2012-04. Any comments from the Board before we open it for a public hearing? Okay, seeing none, we'll open it as a public hearing. If anyone wishes to come speak to us regarding this matter, this is, this is the time. Either for or against, this would be the time. Okay, seeing no one, then we will close it as a public hearing, and we have consideration. Do I have a motion?
Mayor, I move approval.
All right, I have a motion from Alderman Miller. I have a second from Alderman Little. Further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, we will go ahead and hold this public hearing on the matter of the denial of the rezoning of 18-05 and a request to rezone two lots located at 300 Louisville and 314 Scale Street from R2 to R5. These, this item has been pulled by the applicant, but we, since we did notice it for a public hearing, this will be an opportunity, if you came here to speak about it, now would be the time. Anyone? Public hearing. All right, seeing none, I'll close it as a public hearing, and we will move to the next item on the agenda, which is a consideration of a final.
Engagement letter.
Oh, okay. What would I do without you? Thank you. I didn't even put that one. It was on.
Alderman Miller, you pulled the engagement letter off consent, did you not?
The Watkins Ward and Stafford letter? Did you pull that?
No.
I'm sorry, I made that up.
You did make that up. I feel better now.
Sorry about that.
Okay, moving, moving now to consideration of the final resolution granting the exemption for edulorn taxes for South Wire Company LLC.
Move approval.
I have a motion for approval from Alderman Little. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Alderman Walker. Further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
All right, by a vote of six to one, motion carries. Next, it was the travel policy that was removed.
Correct.
So this is, next is consideration of revision, revision to the travel policy. Alderman Miller, I assume you would like to follow?
I would, thank you, Mayor.
Sir.
I just had a couple of questions. I reviewed the policy, and looking under Section P, City Employee Travel Policy, yeah, under, on page 45, number four, I see where we've removed the per diem or travel reimbursement. I think that's a good thing. I wanted to ask, on number eight, on page 46, is that the mayor, in the case of employees at department head level, or with department head status, and the department heads, in the case of departmental employees, is authorized to approve travel in accordance with the following dollar amounts? Is that something we've done in the, has that been part of the policy in the past?
Apparently so. No, it hasn't changed.
Okay, but is, we don't necessarily do it? I mean, because I feel like the travel.
Well, actually, I hadn't looked at it in a number of years, and now that I have, there's some things we've been bringing forward that we didn't have to bring forward.
Yeah, I just found that curious when I was, when I was reading it, because I read it and thought, well, you know, we approve travel all the time for just $800, $500, $800.
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to confirm that. And then my only, the only thing I would like to see changed in the policy is the, and I'll lean on the city attorney for this. It talks about the applicable state statute being 25341, and I think that's part of the reason we've removed per diem from that first sentence there on number four, because 25341 doesn't refer to a per diem, it only refers to payment for actual expenses.
Correct.
So for consistency, under number eight, that item for the mayor, where it talks about the policy for the mayor and approving the travel under 2000, that we, just for consistency, remove per diem from that paragraph.
Yeah, it's a good change.
And so I will move approval of that policy with that condition that we remove per diem.
While we're adding things, there's somewhere in there that says the mayor he. I thought, would you know, maybe he's, he or he slash her or something in there. I'm not even sure where I saw it. I was reading it, I went, hmm. All right, have you noted that, Lisa, for all of Miller's change?
And I'll make, make, I'll make that motion, and with, for per diem and for the mayor's sake, add the condition for he or she.
Okay, all right, thank you. Any, any discussion? All right, we have a motion, no, we don't have a motion. I have a motion from Alderman Miller. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Alderman, sister uncle. Okay, thank you. All right, further discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, motion carries. All right, the next item is a special event request for Crossfire. Okay, we have a motion from Alderman Little.
Second.
Second from Alderman Miller. Discussion? All right, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
All right, by a vote of five to-
The request I have is we have as great of weather as we had last year for the event.
Five to two, the motion carries. It was a great event last year, it really was. Second is consideration of appeal of the decision by the Development Review Committee to deny site plan approval for West, West Creek Village subdivision outside of the city limits to connect to city services. Mr. Price and Havlin. All right, Mr. Price, would you like to introduce yourself and kind of tell the Board what it is you'd like to do?
Yes, ma'am. I'll go ahead and read this.
That'd be just fine.
All right. My name is Roger Price, and I bought 27 acres on Highway 12, 1.5 miles from Walmart. I bought this land to, to keep from going through, you know, keep from going by the city standards, just outside of the city limit, so, because I knew it'd be a little too expensive for me. So I did a pre-application with the City of Starkville Development Review Committee. After I talked with, after I talked at the meeting, I found out that there were no city sewer out there to be provided. So I've contacted MSDH to install septic tanks and with squares. I've already paid MSDH to do the soil service. There was- I've already paid MSDH to do the sewer service, there was no problem with the sewer, I just needed to redo the plots for larger lots. I need to change the lots from 3/4 of an acre to one acre. Since there is no city sewer, all I need to do is just tap into the city water. I have to talk with Mr. Terry Camp and Sam Johnson, Andrew Nigella. Water's no problem if approved by the board, because the water is close to my lot, actually the water crosses my lot. I am building 22 houses at about 2,000 square feet. I have also included a complete application where I've applied for private crossing across railroad, and I paid the $2,000 that is non-refundable. This will allow me to build a road to have access to my property, because there is no access. There are several residents outside the limit that has no, that's on city water, and there's, you know, no curb and gutters anywhere out there. My road is 60 feet wide. My road design will meet the county standards outside the city limits. The storm sewer would be ditches, okay? And I said, I hope that proves that I meet the requirements for it there. There's no access to city sewer outside the limit. The road width is 60 feet, 60 feet wide. My road would be county standards paved, and storm water management would be ditches. I'm asking the board to let me tap into the city water and allow me to pave the road to some county specification.
All right, thank you, Mr. Price. Daniel, would you like to fill us in in terms of the DRC?
Yeah, what this falls under is section 110, 221B of the code of ordinance. It requires site plan approval to connect into city services if you're in the county. And the only mechanism we have in the city for site plan approval is Development Review Committee. And Development Review Committee can only review stuff based on our code ordinance. So after reviewing Mr. Price's application, there was a couple of things that weren't the city standards, such as road width, road design, and stormwater requirements. So the Development Review Committee had no choice but to deny, to deny the application. And then once we denied the application, he had the right to appeal.
Have there been others that have come before us with this same request?
There was one in the not-so-distant past, Corbin Place, which I believe was ultimately denied.
And they were asking for road variance, I believe, and?
It was, I think it was the same requirements, road width, road design, stormwater, it might have also been right-of-way width.
Okay, all right. Okay, does the board have any questions?
May I be recognized?
Yes, you may. Alderman.
Based on just the information that I have and reading the information in my packet, and based on the fact that the Development Review Committee has already denied this, and the agreement requires the development be designed and constructed to city standards, I'm going to move that we deny this agenda item.
Okay, I have a motion to deny this agenda item, which is an appeal of the decision by DRC. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Alderman Little. Discussion?
Mayor.
I'm sorry, I heard Alderman Vaughn first. Alderman Vaughn?
What is the width of our road should be? If you're 60 feet, what is our width?
Hers is 33.
The 60 feet, I think he's referencing is the right-of-way, right-of-way width in the county is 60 feet, city minimum is 50. Our been on roadway width is 31. The counties, I'm not sure what their minimum is.
Anything further, Alderman Vaughn?
This is really a question more for Mr. Camp or Mr. Forrester. So if there's city water available there, is that because we've taken over a water association that's outside the parameters of the city?
Bluefield.
Is this the Bluefield Water Association? Is that the water that exists 1 and 1/2 miles?
If you would come forward, Terry, so we can hear you, please, thank you.
So if you could just get, just to help me understand a little bit better, when we took over, not taken over, when we became a part of that water association, the houses that were already on their service, we just sort of inherited them? Is that how it worked? Has there been?
We transferred all those employees that came into the city.
So has there been?
We owned our water system.
So has there been additional people that become part of our water system as new things get developed out there, or how does that process typically work? Or have we encountered them?
I was trying to think if.
Other subdivisions, you mean?
There's been no subdivisions that I can remember. I do know that we've had some individual houses that have made connection out in the Bluefield, basically service area which would be fed off of the line.
And so that, if you could just remind me of that fee structure, for how does that work for people that are on our water that live in the county?
Well, at the recent board, up until then, we actually were charging 150% water fees for anyone that was outside of the city limits. That included Bluefield, Old West Point Road, a few areas that we've been serving for some time through those water associations. And at the last rate adjustment we made, we leveledized that across all customers, so all of those actually fell under the same rates as the city.
And one more question, is water the only service that we have that currently extends to the west beyond our city limits?
It is.
Thank you, sir.
Alderman Sistrunk.
And just to be sure that I heard this correctly, the people who have become part of the city's water service subsequent to the merger of Bluefield Water Association have been individuals, no developments.
And when we talked, and when we talked about that, that was the issue that I think we talked about, was the issue that it needs to go back to the DRC, because this was, we would have asked for a hydraulic steady to make sure, again, that it can support the system as well, and yet that, but it needs to go to the project.
Alderman.
I recall one project about a year or so ago to the south that we approved, that they were building out to city specs as far as roads, curbs, and gutter, drainage, and so forth, and that was approved.
On South Montgomery or Corbin Place?
It's outside the city, off South Montgomery.
Yes, that one built to city standards.
Okay. And then I understand Corbin Place came, I think, last December, similar situation that we, this board voted down, in keeping, in being consistent, nothing against you, Mr. Price, in being consistent. I think we told Jason Pepper, I think, was brought that forward, if I recall. And I'll have to be consistent, as Vice Mayor said another many times, we try to be consistent. And I don't think it would be right to approve this one, and we didn't approve the other one, so that's where I'm coming from.
Any other discussion? Any other discussion? All right, I have a motion and a second.
I do have one, I have a question.
Alderman.
If I may be recognized. I mean, is this, is this, is this something here in the future that we need to adopt further measurements moving forward, or is this something that I've just asked, just brainstormed, is there, you insinuated that, or talked about there maybe is no mechanism beyond DRC to review this?
It would be nice to have a clear-cut process for this, a clear-cut path after it does come in, to not have to force straight to an appeal-type situation, maybe just a request-type situation. And not have a set of design standards associated with it.
We could consider taking one. All right.
May I be recognized?
Vice Mayor Perkins.
Mr. Attorney, what is your legal opinion on this matter as to the information that's been forced tonight and what you have heard from the representative of the community development department in light of the fact that this applicant is asking only for water? So what opinion can you give us, and give me your rationale as to why, what be the legal and the factual basis for your opinion?
I would start with section 110-5 of the city code, Vice Mayor, which says that water and sewer shall not be provided to persons or groups outside the city limits except on the basis of a written contract approved by the mayor and Board of Alderman. And then the precedent that the board has followed over the last several years that I can remember, that if it hooks up an adjoining subdivision outside the city limits with water or sewer, that that subdivision be built to city specs so it can take good infrastructure. And I would also add that the precedent about Corbin Place is on all fours. On December 5th, the board denied the appeal based on the same reasons, right-of-way width, road width, road design, and stormwater mitigation that were lacking, which is similar to this one, so it's a pretty strong precedent.
And that Corbin Place, if I remember it correctly, that's off of Bluefield or by Kobe Lane somewhere over there in Ward 2, General, Mr. Turner?
Blue Cut, is that my understanding?
Okay, in that area, okay. Okay, all right, thank you, Mr. Attorney.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Price, did you, you heard the city attorney say it?
Yes.
Are you clear on his answer to my question?
I'm very, I'm very clear. Yes, I'm very clear.
Basically, what he's saying in summarization, that there's precedent to deny this request if your proposed subdivision does not meet our requirements? So I do recall that most recent, you know, we've done different things over the years, but that's the most recent where the board has denied it because of non-compliance with the city regulations. So let me just talk to you for a minute. What is your reply to, just, I want to engage in with you, I mean, just kind of talk through, what's your reply to that? What does, do you feel that you'll be able to meet the city specifications?
I might be able to meet the city specification, but I would, I'm wondering, is this other subdivision, is he able to hook up to sewer, city sewer? I guess that would be my question.
And the way I understand the city attorney, that, you know, that we're not, I mean, that we should not allow any persons outside city limits to connect at all if there's, if the board holds the line to not approving any requests similar to yours if they're non-compliant with our ordinance. Of course, you know, over the years, there have been variations. This is the most recent occasion before the board. The city has throughout the years done different things, allowed the persons outside city limit to hook up to our water. It's been back and forth, but these are the most recent projects. But, you know, if the city's going to take the position that it's going to follow the policy that the city attorney talked about, then, you know, that would be consistency. So given that, Mr. Price, certainly I want to commend you for your efforts of wanting to develop, provide, you know, these subdivisions, and maybe perhaps there's some mechanism that may can be in place for you so you can try to get in compliance. And I just hope that this mayor and board, if there ever any change to this existing policy, that, you know, that you will be afforded some type of relief. So you may want to stay in touch with the mayor's office and the primary of the mayor's office, we don't have a director over there, the building department, she'll put you in the path of the person who she deems, and this board deems necessary proper. So, you know, let me close by saying this, and I'm not trying to take a lot of time here, it's a very important project to you, so it's important use for it to me. I would like to approve your vote to approve your project, but the gentleman from three said, you know, that the vice mayor, you know, has a very clear record of consistency, and I have to be consistent, but it puts me in a position where I would have to be consistent by denying your request. But what I would like to see you do, because you're certainly a very businessman and want you to be encouraged, so maybe I just want to appeal respectfully to the mayor and to the board that if there's any change in the policy, just give him an opportunity to come back. And in the meantime, Mr. Price, if you can just try to continue to do what you can within your resources, to try to make it happen. And so I'm going to have to vote for consistency, but at the same time, I'm not voting against you, okay? It's more or less just the, you know, this, I mean, I got to be consistent, because if not, I may treat people who are similarly situated differently, okay? So, but try to get that done, and, you know, and I'm wishing the best for you. And I know you're going to keep working hard, you're going to have perseverance, and I want you to let me know when you get that project done, and I want to take a look at it, because I feel that you're going to accomplish that goal. And stay in touch with the mayor's office, and let her know what you're doing, and try to get in compliance. And if there's some change in policy, I'm sure the mayor will get in touch with you, hopefully. But wish you the best of success. And I just want to take this time, because I want, I don't want you to leave here tonight thinking that, you know, that you don't have a full explanation on why we vote the way we're voting. So are you clear now?
Yes, I understand.
Okay, okay, just make sure you're clear. We are here.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Alderman Vaughn.
Mr. Hablo, on these three, the road width does not meet city standards, the road design does not meet city standards, there is no stormwater management plan. Once he get these done, can he present the project back to the Development Review Committee?
Yes, it would also be a part of a full review. We kind of did a preliminary review so that he'd have to spend the money upfront to get a complete design, because we kind of knew which directions was heading from the beginning. But once he, you know, gets together a full package, we can review it. But that was the three main points.
Those are the three main points. Mr. Price, will you be able to get the old three main points done for us? You will be able to get the old three main point done for us, so we can continue this?
Oh, yeah. I'll be glad.
Okay. Thank you so much, Mr. Price. Thank you. Anyone, anything further? Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. This is a motion to deny.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Price. All right, last but not least would be the claim stocket, I believe. Did I miss, oh, I'm sorry, okay, engineering, yes.
May I move approval?
Okay, I have a motion to approve the Lynn Lane widening and overlay project. Do I have a second? Second from Alderman Little.
Mayor, I just had a question for.
Alderman Miller.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify, reading this, this was, you presented this to us recently. And, okay, and we did, we came to a final conclusion there at the work session. Wasn't there going to be some change at the intersection there, the Sportsplex? Is that part of this, or?
Yeah, this is, this is. I mean, I don't know if it should, the intersection there at Lynn Lane is not industrial water.
Okay. Is this going to be the one on Lynn Lane? That includes the intersection there, the Sportsplex, correct?
Correct.
Okay, has there been any change in the intersection there, is what I'm asking? We had, I think Alderman Sistrunk had maybe asked that question, I was just curious.
We have not had a signal.
Okay.
That was one of the things that was brought up. We have made accommodations for future installation of a signal.
Okay.
At the time, the board either decides or the traffic部门 or additional funding is available.
Okay.
At this time, based on the traffic study that we've done, it doesn't warrant a signal. But looking forward to the future, we've made accommodations.
Yeah, and as we move forward, we'll be able to make those accommodations, you think, though, in that area, fine, even with this overlay?
Sure.
Moving forward, okay. I just wanted to, I just wanted to make, see where we at and be sure I'm the same.
The government, after, really, not many substantive changes since the last presentation.
Just an overlay, okay, thank you.
Okay, further discussion? All right, seeing none, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, now, last but not least.
Move approval.
I have a motion from Alderman Little for the claim stocket.
Second.
A second from Alderman Miller. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
What is it?
Oh, I'm sorry.
What was it? Nay.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Mayor, I thought I understood.
By a vote of five to two, motion carries, thank you. All right, that takes us out of our.
Moving into closed session.
All right, I have a motion to go into closed session from Alderman Little, and a second from Alderman Miller. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We'll be going into a closed determination session to determine the need for. action.[580.91]
And the board did vote in executive session and Mr. Latimer will read that much.
The board moved to deny the grievance of Tommy Stinson and moved that the city of Starkville through the personnel director establish and implement formal interview protocols for all future hires in the city of Starkville.
Mr. Stinson, what we do want to say is you were absolutely heard and from that we're going to make sure that we implement something that makes everyone understand they're all being interviewed so that they all know they're on a level playing field and that they will have the opportunity to prepare and opportunity to have an interview that's formalized. So we appreciate you and we just want to make sure you knew that you were heard and it made a difference. Okay? All right. All right, thank you. That is all of our business. Let me read my language for the work session.
Mr. Stinson, have a seat.
In accordance with the notice as required in the Mississippi Code and Annotate 2541-13, the board will be having a work session on the second of November 2018 at 1:15 p.m. Meeting will be held at City Hall in the Second floor conference room located at 110 West Main Street. Public and media are invited to attend. Notice should be provided to the work session with one hour of this meeting. I posted such notice at City Hall. Notice should be made a part of the minutes of the board meeting. It will be an open public meeting. The city of Starkville public and press are invited to attend. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Hoo hoo.
Okay, I heard a motion down in Oldsmobile and a second. Okay, Oldsmobile. All those in favor. Please say something. Aye, aye. Motion carries. Thank you all and have a great rest of your week.